Welcome, everybody. If you would make sure that your cell phones are put on vibrating, we'd appreciate that. There'll be a $200 fine to be collected up here after that. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you remain standing, there will be the National Anthem. So if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we have with us from Newton Falls City Schools, Mark Semerow. Please.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? Or the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? Or the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Members of council, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we are honored to have our congressional representative from the 13th Congressional District, Congressman Tim Ryan. Congressman Ryan is in his eighth term and serves on the very powerful House Appropriations Committee, which controls expenditures by the federal government. He's chairman of the Legislative Branch Subcommittee and serves on Defense Committee in the Military Construction, Veterans Affairs, and Related Agencies Subcommittee. He also serves as co-chairman on the Congressional Manufacturing Caucus, the Military and Mental Health Caucus, and the Addiction Treatment and Recovery Caucus. He also works to strengthen our manufacturing base by reforming trade policies. He remains focused on our local economy and quality of life issues as he works with local officials and community leaders to enhance economic development and attract higher-quality-paying jobs, as well as being an advocate for our workers. He speaks out on issues of great concern. He's working to make college more affordable, revitalize American cities, and improve the health and well-being of families and children. He has worked very hard to bring the TJX Home Goods Plant to Lordstown and is working with other federal, state, and local officials as it relates to GM Lordstown. He has authored two books, A Mindful Nation: How a Simple Practice Can Help Us Reduce Stress, Improve Performance, and Recapture the American Spirit; and The Real Food Revolution: Healthy Eating, Greed Groceries, and the Return of the American Family Farm. I now have the distinct honor to introduce the Honorable Congressman, Tim Ryan.
Nice to see you. I just saw the mayor. He was in Washington, working on your behalf, so it's always great to see the mayor. I don't want to really talk too long. I really appreciate the invitation to come here, and I know there are a lot of pressing issues here. I want to thank Mr. Lynch for helping connect and make this happen because I think economic development happens on the ground. I mean, it happens in the communities, and my personal philosophy is that the federal government is in place to help support local initiatives that are driven by the local community. And obviously, you know, we know in this community more than most, although I'm realizing there's more and more communities like ours, how great the challenges are with globalization, with automation. We've seen in the last 30 or 40 years in this community an erosion of the manufacturing base. Obviously, the latest is General Motors, but a long line since Black Monday of what's happened to our communities. And I don't believe that the federal policies have been anywhere near adequate on how to reinvest back into communities like ours. There have been communities that have benefited, so the big argument is globalization in the aggregate is good and generates a lot of wealth, and that's true, but it has left about 2/3 of the communities in the United States behind and not plugged in. And now here comes technology and automation, and it's basically the same things happening because those technologies aren't naturally going to go to the communities that haven't already been plugged into the global economy. So our job is to figure out, how do you get the growth? How do you get the investment? Some of it's government, most of it's probably not. Most of it's going to be private sector, but the government has a responsibility to try to plug a lot of these communities in. I know, and you know better than I do, I know the mayor knows and U.S. City Council know what's happened in Ohio with regard to the local government fund as far as trying to help rebuild these communities. In Washington, D.C., it's been completely inadequate in the response for reinvesting back in the communities. When you look at our inability to get some basic transportation language and money invested back in the communities, not just water and sewer, airports, bridges, broadband, the kind of things that are really going to allow those communities to plug into the global economy, it hasn't happened. And I just, I want to just say quickly, just a debrief from Washington. I try to find issues, you probably feel the same way I do, I just feel like the country's so divided right now in so many different ways that we can't get anything done. And so I have tried to find issues to work with the administration, work with the Senate on. We are in the process of trying to renegotiate NAFTA, and I'm glad the President took this up, and we had meetings even in the past week to try to figure out how to make these trade deals better for the United States, where we're lifting up other countries, not bringing our wages and benefits and everything down to where these other workers are in some of the other countries. I think we're making some progress on renegotiating it, and I hope we can, I just told a Republican friend of mine today, I want to be for this. I want to be for this, you know, help us get there. On a transportation bill, I'm getting mixed signals on whether or not we're going to be able to do it. I know the President has said he wants to do about a $1.5 trillion road, bridge, infrastructure bill. I mean, I can't even imagine, we're talking about spending trillions of dollars, but that's how big the economy's gotten, and that would be a huge boost for communities like ours to get that money back into the local communities. I've supported what's going on with the fracking industry, with the natural gas industry. That's creating, you know, tens of thousands of jobs. In fact, I flew into Pittsburgh today, which I often do, and drove by that $4 billion cracker plant that takes the natural gas and cracks it out and takes all the different kind of elements of gas and sells it off. Some goes to plastics, some goes, variety of different industries. $4 billion cracker plant. There'll be about 10,000 union construction jobs out there. Seeing the same thing over in Lordstown. Those are the kind of industries that we've got to continue to support because they mean jobs, and once you do that, you start to try to land, which I wanted to kind of mention tonight, you want to start landing the plastic companies that want to be around the cracker plant because they'll use the natural gas. But we need, we need like a national strategy to say, how do we get that growth, those investments into communities like Newton Falls that have had trouble trying to plug in? I'll just say one last thing, and then just we'll open it up for Free For All. And I want to recognize Commissioner Frank Fuda here, who's here. Thanks for being here, Frank. He's been great, and I'm semi-biased because he was my Little League baseball coach. I won't tell you how many years ago, Coach, right? One of the other problems that we've really got to address in Washington is figuring out how to get people to come together. So we're in this world now that you're on a team, right? You're on, you're in a tribe. You're either on this tribe or that tribe, and there's no coming together. And one tribe seems to focus that the government has all the answers, and another tribe seems to think that it's all the private sector. And what we've learned, and I think throughout the country's history, is it's that blend of really smart government that's thinking ahead, being very efficient, and making strategic investments around infrastructure and education and workforce development, things like what's going on with fracking and energy, and then figure out how to get the private sector to come in, in support with the power of the free enterprise system. That's what, that's what, at the end of the day, what made our country great. And we've got to get back to figuring out what that balance is, and it's somewhere right in the middle. And what we have now is a real concentration of the wealth to where 80% of venture capital money, which is the big money that comes in and takes small companies and makes them big, takes small industries and grows them like crazy, 80% of that money is in three states, New York, California, Massachusetts. Only 9% of that goes to women, and only a couple percent go to African-Americans or Latinos. It's a concentration in three states, and we're working hard to try to figure out how to get that private investment. So you do your, government does the infrastructure, government reinvests back in the communities, you incentivize through the tax code and other ways to get the private money to come in behind it, and that's, at the end of the day, I think, how you start lighting up these communities that have been, been left behind. So I'm anxious to sit down and hear what you have to say. Rick Leonard is here, who you may know, who is briefing me on all of your different projects with regard to the railroad and CSX and all of that, so I'm happy to have that conversation and many, many others and really engage. As I said, the mayor was down this week, meeting with my staff, which is very important. A lot of mayors don't come down, and I think it's really important for, for the leaders of towns to come to Congress and start to push and make the arguments for especially small, mid-sized communities that don't necessarily have the voice of a New York City or a Los Angeles or a San Francisco. You coming down meant a lot, and he was with the mayor of Cuyahoga Falls and other similarly situated community size-wise, and it made a big difference. So I appreciate you coming down, and I'm happy to open it up and take any questions. I want to cross-examine the mayor real quick here before I let him, no, I'm just kidding.
No. I do want to say, I've been--
Any of you guys want to get up here? I know how this goes.
I've been to Washington twice in the last year to speak with the congressman, and I want to say that I appreciate you taking your time out of your busy schedule. When we were there Tuesday, there was four groups waiting to talk with you, and I know that it's pretty busy down there, and I have to say publicly, your staff is tremendous to work with. The subjects that we were working on are very in-depth and very detailed, and it's, it not only affects our community, but it affects communities all of the United States. And your staff has such a hold on what they're doing, and they're asking the questions that we're looking for and looking for answers, and very impressed with your staff. Very impressed.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Batisti, do you have a question?
First of all, Congressman, I'd like to welcome you to Newton Falls. Could you give us some details on the Camp Garfield situation with the missile defense?
Yeah, yeah. So Camp, Camp Garfield, Camp Ravenna, Ravenna Arsenal, I'm like, I tell my staff every day, I'm like, what are we calling this today? Is, has been a long-term project. We've been quietly since about 2003 trying to really reinvest back into, into Camp Garfield. We started with some water lines and sewer lines and some basic infrastructure so that we could lay the groundwork for turning it into a state-of-the-art training facility. And then we were able to get money for some, some other things, and then a shooting range. I will say, as an aside, I'm really concerned that the national emergency that the President declared, he's going to get about $4 billion from what's called the Military Construction Account, and we've got about $8 million, eight or nine million for the shooting range out there so they can train with machine guns. Because I just want that thing to be a state-of-the-art, national gem right here in our community. So we kept trying to get money for it, and there's a chance that 8 million can go down for the border wall, which I'm really concerned because that's, that was a big, that was a big lift to try to get that there. So that is an aside. So we're trying to build it up. So the East Coast Missile Defense was like beyond our wildest dreams, $3.5, $3.8 billion project that would lead to thousands of construction jobs and about 800 permanent jobs. There's a debate now. We kept hearing they're going to come out, as you know, Camp Garfield got down to the final three sites, and the administration was going to make a decision, this was months ago, and General Secretary Mattis at that point said, we need to go back and look at this again. And then there was another couple months. And basically, they're, they're evaluating whether or not the $4 billion investment meets the strategic needs for the East Coast because it's an East Coast Missile Defense. So we're actually a little bit safer here because, just so you know, because we got this question a lot, people are like, oh, my God, they're going to be shooting at us. So one of the reasons our site is something that they like and another site in upstate New York, because you would literally try to shoot the missile down somewhere over the Northern Atlantic before it gets anywhere close to here. So now they're evaluating with the challenge coming from, from North Korea and the threats coming from China, that maybe the East Coast Missile Defense isn't a priority now. They haven't said this, but this is my sense. So they're going to back and they're trying to evaluate that now. So we, we should know more, I hope, in the next month or two, but I don't have any more knowledge than that.
Thank you. Can I get another question, Mr. Ryan? Okay, thank you. Can you give me your take on that gas tax that the governor's proposing?
Boy, I have my hands full with federal policies. You're making me answer a state question. I don't want any local questions either, okay? I, you know, to be honest with you, all I heard was what it was, 18-cent tax index for inflation. You know, I haven't looked at the whole package. I believe that, you know, we need to reinvest back into, into our roads and bridges and our infrastructure. It would be a job creator. I think for every billion dollars that's spent on transportation and roads and bridges, I think it creates tens of thousands of jobs. And so to have that revenue stream at a time that, that we really need it in Ohio, I think is important. I don't know the whole package, so I don't want to, you know, come down on one side or the other on it, but that would be a lot of money for communities like yours to be able to go get projects done.
Thank you.
And if we could, if we could keep the questions to the federal side because that is--
That's all right.
If it's a state issue, like the one, you know, talked about that last Friday, I can address some of that at the council meeting itself, but if we could try to keep them to the federal level, it would be great. Mr. Ryan?
President Ryan, I mean, Congressman, Freudian slip, sorry, Congressman Ryan. Mr. Batista stole my thunder, and you had already mentioned the arsenal, the missile defense, and the federal government working on the road, getting together and working on the roads and bridges. But I heard something on the news about the General Motors, and do you feel that if there is a chance of, if General Motors doesn't come through with stopping the, coming back or stopping them, or getting another product, that we will get, could entice somebody else to come? I had heard on the news about piecing it out, you know, into smaller plants and other, you know, is there any talk, have you heard anything about, anything like that, other companies or anything?
I've not heard anything about piecing it out, other than probably what you heard, nothing beyond that. I know there are conversations that I think a lot of people in the community are having with any potential opportunity that can go in there. And I think it's a great facility. I think people who work there knows there have been $300 million-plus dollars put in that thing in the last few years. It's, it's a great facility. I, I hope, my goal, whether it's General Motors or somebody else, would be to get an electric car in there, just to give you some perspective on the future of electric vehicles. Right now, we're falling behind. I think China owns about 40% of the, of the electric vehicle market, and right now, it's about 1 to 2 million cars, electric cars, and the projection into 2030 is 30 million electric vehicles. So I want to get us in front of a tidal wave, and I think electric vehicles are that tidal wave. And so I, my, my goal would be to figure out how we get some electric vehicle in there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Talk about your fellow social today?
The worker?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can, I can mention that. Go ahead.
I just, first of all, want to thank you for coming out to a small town in Newton I just had one question for you. I know there's been rumors that you might run for presidency. Is that something that you're still considering? And I would love to see you make a run for it.
All right. Mark that down. We got our first endorsement here. Should have came here a few weeks ago. Yeah, I appreciate it. I am, and I, you know, I, I'm very concerned about what's happening in the country. I, I'm very concerned. Over the last couple years, I've traveled around the country a lot, and I've seen a lot of communities that have the exact same struggles we have, exact same challenges, and, you know, a federal government that has really failed to address in any adequate way at all, as I already said, the challenges that these communities are facing. I mean, when you look at, at the struggles that people have, you know, this GM is like the last straw, I mean, just seeing family members, friends that we all have have to pick up and leave. I mean, it's just, it's heartbreaking, and, you know, I want to, I want to be in a position to do as much about that as I possibly can, whether that's run for president or not. I do think we probably need a president from a place like this that actually understands what's going on here, and we're having conversations that in many ways have no application for what's happening. You know, the, the number one call we get in our office is about pensions. We're not having a national discussion about retirement security at all, you know, and plugging into the economy. So these are, and I'll just say real quickly because I don't want to talk too much about it, but when the steel mills closed in the 1970s, the technology in the steel mills were from pre-World War I, okay? And we got our clock cleaned. And here we are, 40-some years after Black Monday and when Youngstown Sheet and Tube closed, and we're still just trying to dig our way out of this hole. And what I see happening now is that there are newer technologies that, it's hard for all of us to really understand what it does, but the artificial intelligence and additive manufacturing and these things that allow a company to ramp up productivity like crazy are, those technologies aren't getting into the old industries. So it's kind of like the replay of what happened with the steel mills. And I believe that if we can get this technology into these old industries and dominate them like just, we're going, and we're going to educate our society, we're going to make investments in every community, we're going to clean the country up, and, and take risks and innovate, and then cut workers in on the deal, which has been missing. Wages have been flat for 30 years, and I'm feeling like no one's, no one's talking about that. What China's doing, now you got me all fired up, but like what, but what China's doing is, it's frightening, their ability to coordinate their effort, and they use what's called "whole of government." They have their economic policy, their military policy, their education policy, their research policy, their infrastructure and transportation policy, their foreign policy. All is going in one direction, and they are building, I just looked at a map the other day, it's called the New Silk Road, it's called Belt Road. They have a railroad from northeast China that goes all the way to Prague, and they've got all kinds of ports that they're building around the countries in Asia. They are signing long-term contracts for raw materials in Africa. A lot of those materials we need for our Defense Department, we need for our phones that they're pulling out, they go in and they basically bribe the local country. They don't even hire people, they like bring Chinese workers to come in and work, but they, they're locking those contracts down, and they want to be the top country in manufacturing in 2025 in the top 10 industries. So artificial intelligence, additive manufacturing, aerospace, space, electric vehicles, and they're going. And they have a 10-year plan, they have a 20-year plan, they have a 30-year plan, they have a 50-year plan, they have a 100-year plan. Just reading a book called The 100 Year Marathon about China, and we're living in a 24-hour news cycle with no plan. Because I'm like, I'm supporting the tariffs on China, right? I support the President on that. I've been talking about it my whole career. I'm backing them 100%, but it's not part of some bigger strategy. It's just we're putting tariffs on Chinese steel coming in, or, you know, whatever, aluminum. So that worries me. And I got kids, you got kids, I'm looking at these communities, and I'm very concerned. So I don't know what I'm going to do yet, but I'll make sure I get you a yard sign to put up if I pull the trigger on it. Sir.
Mr. Ryan, I applaud you for bipartisan work in different things. I think we need more of that in the country. You mentioned Youngstown Sheet and Tube. I was once one of their employees.
Oh, wow.
And, you know, I, I saw what happened when the steel mills went down, how Youngstown was like dominoes and everything fell over, and I think economic development is just so important. If we could get, you know, the missile base, that would be great, but we in Newton Falls want to move ahead regardless. We want to try to get growth. As far as roads go, I appreciate any help, you know, that we can get to, to do that because it's like $100,000 a mile to pave the roads, and, you know, I think that would help our, our local communities tremendously to have, you know, state and federal help with that. Here in Newton Falls, we have, you know, some vacant storefronts, we're working to get them filled up, but anything we can do to better our community, you know, to make it a nicer place to live, and roads are one of the basic things we, we need. So, you know, I support that, and I'm glad you do. And basically, that's about it. I'll--
We're working hard. We really want to get a transportation bill. We really want to get one. Democrats control the House now, so I think there's a good chance we can get one and get it to the Senate, and we're trying to work with the President to, you know, have him influence the Republicans in the Senate because we think we can probably do something pretty big. I mean, the question's going to be, how do you pay for it? I mean, that's going to ultimately, especially, you know, if the state raises the gas tax 18 cents, and then I come back and say, hey, let's put another 10 cents on, they're running us out of town. But I'll say, the council people told me to do this. That's what I'm going to say. I'm going to say, go talk to your councilmen. But, you know, that, but it's, it's needed. We, we have not raised the gas tax, for example, since 1993, and it only went up a few cents, I think four or five cents. And the trick now, too, is now that there are electric cars and natural gas and everything, that you've got to find other revenue sources to be able to, to pay for it because you're not getting, with the higher mileage vehicles, so you're not getting the tax revenue that goes into the trust fund that every four or five years we'd spend. That number's down because people have cars that go so much further now, and they don't need as much gas, which is a good thing, but it's one of the, one of the-- The deficit is something we should be concerned about. After the tax cut, which was about $2.3 trillion when, after you pay for interest, because all the money was borrowed, it's going to be about $2.3 trillion in the next, I think, year, our annual deficit, annual, will be a trillion dollars. And in the out-years, four or five years, it'll be a trillion a year, every year, adding to the debt, borrowing money, a good chunk of that is from China, which really makes you want to shoot yourself, if you're thinking, they're coming at us with all this stuff, and we're borrowing money from them? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. So, but we got to do it, because unlike the tax cut, which had some benefits, there's not a whole lot to show for it, where if you're building roads and bridges and water lines and sewer lines, and, you know, you're meeting your EPA mandate, for example, that has value, you know, especially for ratepayers. So, we'll keep plugging away.
Well, one more thing, you know, if electric cars are the thing of the future, I mean, maybe we need to try to, in our negotiations with China, let them come here and invest in our economy.
Yeah.
You know, let's build a Chinese car here. I've owned three GM cars, one of them was the Chevy Cruze, but I want jobs here.
You don't have to invite them, they're coming. They're here, yeah, they, yeah. I mean, what I would have liked to see is a tax cut that would have incentivized companies who are moving in these industries that are growing. It should have some broader purpose, and it, when you're doing it at that level. So, if you got the government saying, okay, we're going to organize, this is like how you would do, I think how you'd do it, you'd say, we're going to train our workers to be able to work in these electric car companies, we're going to give a tax incentive for people to buy them, and we're going to give a tax incentive for the corporation to move to areas like ours who need economic development in a growing industry, give them a tax cut to come to areas like ours to make electric vehicles. So, you got everything kind of moving in the same direction, and then you help the company, if they need it, with working with Youngstown State, working with Eastern Gateway, doing the job retraining, and then cut the worker in on the deal, right? Make sure they got profit sharing, make sure they get productivity bonuses, and what you see when you do that is the workers start to police each other, like, hey dude, I'm like, you know, you're missing work, and I'm looking for a bonus for productivity, and they start policing each other, and productivity goes up dramatically. So, there's a way out of this, we just, we got to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Congressman, for coming out, we appreciate it. He's like a right-wing pro-business Republican talking, and I like what I'm hearing. I don't want to get you in trouble, you know? I don't want to get you in trouble. This is kind of a quasi-based question. We spoke a few years back, and you talked about pensions, and being a small business owner, I don't know if I'm here as a councilman or small business over, city manager, what do you think? Both? So, I guess I want to speak on both fronts. As a small business owner, the 500-pound gorilla for us right now is healthcare. And since Obamacare has passed, go ahead, you want to say something? Okay, so since Obamacare has passed, listen, I don't have, I think everybody should have insurance, and I'm all for that, there's not an issue with me, and I've even told the mayor that, and city manager lynched that. I think it's gotten to the point where the healthcare cost has gotten so far out of hand that, when you talk about pensions, you know, when I travel in business, I'm seeing people, you know, in their late 60s and early 70s, still having to work just to maintain their health insurance. For instance, at our company, before pre-Obamacare, our premiums were probably about maybe $800 a month or something like that, 10 years ago, 2008, yeah. So, right now, they're about $1,600 a month, and this year was probably the biggest increase, 2019. I think we incurred about a 25% increase, and all the people I know in business like Kraft Made and whoever incurred the same type of skyrocketing cost. Now, that being said, with that burden on small business, is the federal government finally going to address this situation and kind of correct it? Because I know it's a complex situation, it's a complex question, there's no easy answer, and I won't hold you to it. But, as a small business owner, who, you know, I'm looking to retire at 60, 60, 67 years old, I won't be able to do that until this insurance thing is straightened out. I meet a lot of people traveling where I hear the same story over and over and over again, Terry, I can't retire till I'm 70 years old. And I think, I think that's important, that, as what you said, you get to a certain point in your life, or retirees, whether it's General Motors or the steelworkers, that you want to be comfortable and not have to worry about things like this. So, how would you, how would you answer something like that?
So, how many people work for you?
100.
100. There's a lot of, obviously, which you know, prescription drug costs are huge. The system's broken in the sense that we have people without healthcare that don't have preventative care, and they go to the emergency room when they're a hell of a lot sicker than they would be if they just had a primary care physician. So, the whole idea is, how do you do, like you do with car insurance in Ohio, where everybody's got to get insurance, because you know you're going to get in an accident at some point, and it shouldn't be pushed off on somebody else, and you don't want free riders who just show up and don't pay anything, but yet they can get healthcare. So, I think you got to get everybody in the tent, you know, and I know people don't like that, because it's an individual mandate, and you got to get it, but like, you're going to get sick, you're going to get pregnant, you're going to get sick, you're going to get cancer, you're going to get, everybody's going to get, you're not going to get pregnant, but I mean, I'm not even going down that road, but anyway. That would have got weird real quick, Mayor, I'm just telling you. You got to get everybody, you got to get everybody in the tent. Right now, because of how broken it is, and I will tell you, John Kasich talks as articulately about this as anybody, about why he expanded Medicaid in the state. Mental health, opiates, all of those reasons. Right now, we spend two and a half times more than any other industrialized country, and we get the absolute worst results than any other industrialized country. Canada spends about $4,000 per individual, we spend 11, and we're not any, we're not any healthier, you know, we're less healthy. And I think that speaks to the system being fragmented and fractured. I don't think we should take private insurance off of anybody, I don't think the government should be in the business of doing that. One of the plans I'm supporting that I think would be a natural first step for us to take is moving Medicare down to about 50 or 55. And a lot of our friends at General Motors, who aren't yet into Medicare, but, you know, you lose your job or whatever, insurance companies really don't want to insure people who are older, that's why the Medicare program exists in the first place, because no one could get insurance. So, move that down to about 50 or 55. And then what happens is you are actually taking healthy, the healthiest people, or healthier cohort is going to go into the Medicare program. So, instead of having people 65 and under, now you're going to have 55 and under, so you're going to have more healthy people in the Medicare program, which will help extend the life of the Medicare program. Then, you're taking the oldest and sickest people out of private insurance and putting them in the Medicare program. So, you're actually going to help drop the cost of the private insurance. And then in addition to that, this bill, maybe it wouldn't affect you, but would allow small business people with 50 or less employees to buy into the Medicare program, which I think is kind of the way we've got to move. Like, if you like what you got, fine, if not, you want to buy into the Medicare program, you can buy into the Medicare program. And then we start moving down the path of getting everybody in the tent, and if businesses, and I don't know why businesses aren't for like a Medicare-for-all, because you could just say, look, I'm going to pay every year, whatever my insurance is, and it's not going to go up 180% one year, because a couple people got cancer, and then go back down to 15, 20, 50, 80, I mean, we hear all the horror stories. You'll know every year what you're paying, and you'll distribute the cost of your 100 people and the three people that got cancer in your company across all of society, like, we'll all pay, it's insurance, you know? We'd probably have to work at increasing the reimbursement for doctors, because a lot of docs couldn't survive on just a straight Medicare business, especially with Medicaid, which is, reimbursement's even worse. So, I think moving down that kind of road, and I'm just going to say this, too, real quick, we've got to get healthier as a country. This is like a really tough conversation that we all need to have, because in the next year or so, half the country is going to have either diabetes or prediabetes. And we all know, if you go into the hospital with heart disease, high blood, whatever the thing you have, and diabetes, totally complicates things. And you end up in the hospital another day and a half or two days. So, factor that across half the country having diabetes or prediabetes. And so, we've got to have a conversation about, you know, the food we're eating, our ability to get ourselves healthy, what are we feeding our kids? I went to a school about a year ago, and a kid, the breakfast for the kids was the chocolate milk and a Rice Krispie treat, and I just looked on the back to just look at the amount of sugar that was in those two things. And the chocolate milk is about as much as a Coke pop, and a Rice Krispie treat was another, I don't know, 30 grams of sugar. And so, I learned this conversion, for every teaspoon of sugar you have is four grams, so if you go to your, whatever you get at the store, you look on the back and it has 40 grams of sugar, it's 10 teaspoons of. And I was just thinking there, this kid had probably 60 or 70 grams of sugar, so that would have been, how many, you know, divided by four, and the kid didn't even go to class yet, right? And then my wife's a fourth-grade teacher, wired, right? So, my wife's a teacher, and she's like, this kid's bouncing off the walls, and it wasn't her school, but you, you know, the kids bounce off the wall for two periods, then they crash in the third period. Like, I don't know why this kid's flunking math. Well, it's third period, he's like sleeping again. Like, we've got to be smart, I just think of my old football coaches, like how they used, they weren't too hard on it, but they, you know, you got to watch what you eat, you got to be, you look at Tom Brady and these guys that are performing, LeBron, performing at this high level, I'm not saying we're going to be like that, because I'm definitely not doing that. I ate too much Handel's ice cream, that like, live in that world, but we've got to, we've got to do better nationally and in our schools, because, here's the main point, that school district was almost 100% Medicaid. So, now, we're feeding these kids this stuff, they get diabetes, they're on the Medicaid program, so we pay collectively as taxpayers to feed them this food, 18 years later, they get diabetes, then we pay for their healthcare that they have with public money. And you wonder why taxpayers are like, you're killing me, right? Well, that's the system that's in place, and that is directly related to our healthcare costs, and we got to tie that all together.
I have one more, one more question. You noted in your opening statement that you're talking about venture capitalist dollars, excuse me. I kind of find it odd that the three highest tax states, New York, California, Massachusetts, have the majority of the venture capitalist dollars in their state. How does that work? Good question.
Well, I have an answer for you, and those states take those tax dollars and they invest heavily into broadband, they invest heavily in the education, you know, the California public systems, the New York public systems, Massachusetts, they do a ton of research with that money. They have their problems, too, there's no question. But I think through those early investments that they made, they started developing the tech industries, and, you know, you look at what's happening in Silicon Valley, it's just insane. But the sad part is, San Francisco's a mess. It has like a huge homeless problem, like, middle-class people can't even afford to live there. They've got to bus people into like clean hotel rooms and serve food, because they can't even afford to live anywhere near the, near the city, which I think is an opportunity. When we talk about, you know, I read about your program and what you want to do with the downtown, I think that's really smart, and I'll tell you why. Because one of the plays we're trying to make, that I've been trying to make, is how do we get those companies who don't want to be in San Francisco anymore? Because they can't afford it. They just can't afford it.
And who is the congressperson who represents San Francisco?
I don't have no idea. Now, you're being ornery.
He told me to behave, Mayor, yeah.
They, I want to, and we have been trying to connect more and more, and I try to go out there and meet people, because they pay, how much is it a square foot out there? 50, 60, 70 bucks a square foot in Silicon Valley, San Francisco. They pay engineers, they had a bidding war last year where they were given, they were paying engineers like 115, 120, 150 grand, and they were given signing bonuses of $100,000, like they were professional athletes. That's how stiff the competition is there. So, the first move out of California has been Salt Lake City, Phoenix, little bit in Reno, and I think that's kind of the, in Austin, is Austin, Texas. But they're looking, so you guys may have seen this on the news, where we brought 13 venture capitalists to, on a bus, and we brought them here to the valley, and then we took them up to Flint and Detroit and South Bend, because I wanted them to just start looking at the Midwest as an opportunity for them. And they started to, they've invested some money, they put about $2.5, $3 million into a small little venture fund just for areas like ours, and so I'm just trying, it's just like, but what I, the president of the United States should say, we're buying 15 buses through the Department of Commerce, and we're going to go get these people, and we're going to bring them to these areas, we're going to bring them down south, we got to get this money out, the tax incentive's going to be to get them out, the education's going to be to get them out, the investments the Department of Energy, the National Science Foundation make, Department of Health and Human Services, all those incentives are going to be to go to areas of the country that aren't doing well, so that we can start lifting all these boats up. I feel very strongly about this, I'll tell you, I met a guy the other day, I'm just totally rambling at this point, but I met a guy the other day, he was President Obama's top manufacturing officer, and he, he was telling me this story about businesses from MIT that were spinning out, and I can't remember how many, he said, but it was over 100 of them. With our public tax dollars, they developed different products, mostly around new-line manufacturing. And then they got about $4 billion for these companies in first Series A seed money to get them up and running. And then, like, we have no government program or anything to like take them from where they were there to like the next step. He said, every one of those companies that were started with public, your public tax dollars is out of the United States right now, and 70% of them are in China, because we've not gotten smart enough to figure out creative strategies, and he was saying, you need a little venture fund, public-private foundation that can take them from where they were then to the next step, and once you get them to that next step, they're probably not going to leave your country. They're going to want to locate around where they started. And so, if we're doing those kind of things in the tech belt between Cleveland and Pittsburgh, if they're doing it, you know, down south, if they're doing it in North Carolina, all of a sudden, you can start growing these manufacturing centers. But like I said, there's no strategy for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. First of all, thank you again for coming here to Newton Falls. I can't express how meaningful it is to have our number-one representative, Washington, coming here to talk to us directly, and I do want to tell you that Newton Falls, economic development is at the forefront, and when people say, well, you're a small community, you don't really have an economic development department, and I say, yes, I do. I have six people on the team, the mayor, and the five members of city council, and we're vigorously working towards resolving economic development issues, and we're in the process right now of creating incentives, and the councilmen know that over the next few weeks, we expect a couple of announcements about new jobs coming to Newton Falls because of their hard work. Having said that, I want to talk a little bit about an older form of technology, which is really new again, you talked about the new rail line over in China. One of the things that we've experienced lately is, and communicating with CSX, they've talked about when we want to abandon some lines, and we feel a little bit that we're being held hostage. And the reason for that is that when a new One of the things that we've experienced lately is, and communicating with CSX, they've talked about when we wanna abandon some lines, and we feel a little bit that we're being held hostage. And the reason for that is that when a new, especially manufacturing business talks about locating in our area, well, the questions we get is, is there rail transportation? Do you have a rail spur? And it's, even though it seems like old technology, it's still very important to new manufacturers coming to our community, and I'm hoping if you could address the idea of the transportation bill, talk about that component part, so we don't have to get on our hands and knees and beg the railroad not to rip up those lines, that in a few years from now might mean more jobs to us.
Right.
And if I could just add on to that, because that's one of my questions, the, part of the issue is, we get a lot of requests for information on sites for new businesses coming to the area, and nearly all of them have, do you have rail? Do you have rail?
Yeah.
And the rail to the old Rockwell plant is now a sidewalk. And the only rail we have left is our siding in the area where we just annexed 440 acres. Venture Plastics is considering using a rail for, you know, for plastics, and when we have about 300 acres adjacent to that, that rail would be excellent for. And if the other communities, you know, can't buy into this, we'd at least like to keep the first couple of miles of the rail off of the CSX mainline, so that we could, you know, use that. Some of the other communities, like Columbus and Jackson, Ohio and that, have their own rail. And, you know, the problem is, they want so much money for it. We've talked, we haven't really talked to Genesee and Wyoming yet, but we're, we need to do something that we can keep that, at least that first two miles of the rail. They wanna take the rest of it out, fine, I hate to tie myself to the rail, but that's coming up, I guess. But, you know, it's...
Let me know when that happens, I won't be here for that.
But, you know, that, it is important that the sub-transportation board, they're not working with anybody.
Yeah. I will, I will say, the toughest nut we've had to crack in 17 years, Rick and I've been doing this, has been the railroads. They are, they are just, we got cameras and women in the room, but they're tough. They're tough to deal with. I, I've not seen a case, Mayor, where they, where they would let go of just a couple miles. I don't think we know, they usually keep, you know, because it's, it's, it's more valuable to get rid of the whole thing, or just trash the whole thing. But we're happy to get, Rick, I know Rick's been engaged in all this. I'll do whatever I can. We, we got, on my staff in DC, in fact Samantha, who you were meeting with, is trying to really scour the transportation agencies and see if there's anything possible where we can figure out how to, how to help, get federal money to help. Because it's, how much is it, 2.?
It was 25 million, or 2.8 million for the whole thing, yeah.
2.8. If there's any program at all to help a distressed community that has this demographic and this, 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 and this, you know, maybe there's something in there, we'll, we'll make sure we turn every stone over. I can't, you know, certainly can't promise anything. If there's a transportation bill, and maybe, maybe there'd be some creative way we can, we can do it. There's, you know, you just try to figure out a way sometimes, and sometimes you get lucky, and sometimes you don't. But we could, we'll certainly try our best to try to help you. I know there's some, there's some EDA money, economic development money, for trying to study. I don't know if we can slow CSX down by saying, we could probably get a little bit of money to do a long-term study for, you know, 100 grand or whatever, and then figure out how to get the federal government to help pay for that. So we should have, definitely have that conversation. But I remember seeing something about financing, help, helping communities finance it, I don't know if that's what you're interested, but we'll, we'll stay on it with you, for sure.
Okay. If you don't care, I'd turn my back to you, I'm sorry. And again, I, I wanna thank you so much for, you know, your staff and, and you to take time to talk to us, especially in your office there, and to come here, this is, it's great to do this. But your staff, again, it's just, to me, when you start talking about some of these very complex issues, it, it's just really comforting, when you go down there and you start talking to Samantha, and she knows all about it. And that is just, it's fantastic to me, at least they, they know what we're doing now, so. You don't have to answer the first two questions if you wanna talk about it a touch, but some of the reasons that I go to these meetings, the underlying issue is how it affects Newton Falls and the other small or large public power communities in the state of Ohio. And I know the council doesn't really understand it, our finance director does, and our city manager does, but I don't think the public does and anybody else does. But the, the first one is, Representative Anna Eshu, the Democratic Congressman from the 18th Continental District in California, she sponsored House Bill 530, which is Accelerated Wireless Broadband Development by Empowering Local Communities Act 2019. I ask that there's any actions by the FCC and that they shouldn't have any effect or any force on what they do with this. Further, that I suggest that the FCC order ignores the law, and it overturns decades of local control under the false pretense that municipalities are creating barriers to deploy broadband. 5G is essential for us, we're trying to tap into some of it, the law on the railroad now, we're working to do that, but it has to be done responsibly and equitably. I suggest that the FCC order imposes an unfair one-size-fits-all approach, and that it could truncate local review, it precludes consideration of the community's aesthetic requirements, it jeopardizes the safety of our employees and our citizens, and it forces our communities to subsidize broad, giant broadband providers. So I ask that you support your legislation and try to vacate the FCC order and restore local control of all the pull attachments for the broadband that's coming. I know you guys just got this on Tuesday, so...
Yeah. I agree with a lot Anna does, so this makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other part of this is, the, we talked to your staff about the concerns of the sequestration impact on Build America bonds. And what that is, is the clean renewable energy bonds that are out there. The mandatory sequestration is already costing Newton Falls about $150,000, and by 2027, it's gonna be about $450,000. Some of the communities in Ohio, it's up as, as high as 6.8 or 6.9 million dollars. You know, when they negotiated the federal government bonds, the government, you know, said they would back them, and now they're not backing them, so it's coming out of our pockets. It's a bottom line for our customers, our utility customers. So in order to, you know, keep the program going and pay the bills, we have to raise utility rates to cover what the government was supposed to cover when the bonds were put out there.
Yeah.
So if you could, if you wanna...
When did you get them? Did you get them out of the stimulus bill?
Yeah, I think that's where they came from originally, yes.
Yeah.
So those are the things, those are important issues that this community and other communities like ours face that nobody really understands, and it's out there and it's costing us money. But because I go to these meetings and I get this information, I can bring it back, and this is how we can try to keep, you know, our utility rates low, is by doing these things and trying to work and get the, the government to go back and do the things we're supposed to do.
I will tell you, it means, obviously, I know, I know you guys, but it means a lot. You got, you said you got to meet with Bill Johnson?
Yes.
To have a mayor come down from a town like Newton Falls and be in Congress, go into the offices and making the pitch, is invaluable. Because now I can say, I, I talked to the mayor of Newton Falls, and da, 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 da. So it's not just me saying it, or Anna Eshu saying it, or someone, it's, you have people on the ground in Washington, it's really important to do it. I tell people all the time, not everyone can go to DC, but to the extent you can keep banging on the doors, it starts to move the needle over time. Because you're not alone, you got other mayors down there, whether you're talking about municipal power or whatever.
Yeah, we met with Sherrod Brown and Senator Portman, but they all had to leave to go vote, too, so.
Yeah.
The only other issue, we talked about the CSX, but the only other issue, and it's, it's kind of a, a state issue and a federal issue, is when it comes to economic development, when, when you do infrastructure growth, in the past, it used to be that there was a lot of tax dollars out there for grants, where you could do speculation, you could put a water line and sewer line in, you could do things on speculation and hope you could get somebody in.
Yeah.
Well, they changed the requirements on all the grants, and now you have to have an end user before...
In Ohio.
Yeah, before you can, you know, get somebody here. So if I have a company that wants to come in on Route 5, where we don't have sewer, and we have to say, okay, XYZ company wants to come to Route 5, now we have to do a grant, and depending on where you're at in the grant cycle, you could have 12 to 15 months before your grant's approved.
Yeah.
And then, once construction and the bids are out, you could have three years tied up.
Yeah.
A business isn't gonna wait three years to come to Route 5. They wanna come in now, or they're gonna go someplace where the, the service and all the utilities are already there.
Yeah.
So we need to be able to find some money so that we could do, and this is also, you have Mayor Melfi and the whole Mahoney River Corridor Bears Association, this is their feeling also.
Yeah.
All the, all the, the communities on the river are talking the same language. But we need to be able to find some grant money that we can attach to, so that we can extend our utilities and have it ready for the job sites, and have the ready builds for, you know, properties that we have, but we just don't have all the utilities.
We, we were just running into that with some local, local community, a couple weeks ago, I can't remember. But we, it didn't, for those of you who don't know, it used to be, you'd give, Ohio had grant money they'd give to Newton Falls for a piece of property, they'd put water lines in, they'd put sewer lines in, fix the property up, whatever else needed to be done, and then that property's there, and then you go out and recruit a business. And then when Governor Kasich came in, he flipped it, he said, unless you have an end user, you're not getting any money for this, that, or the other thing. So even if you have an end user who's about ready to go, they're like, well, I need water lines, I need sewer lines, and you're like, hold on, stay there, we're gonna go to the state and try to get some grant money for water and sewer lines, and we'll see in six, you know, 12 to 16, 18 months. And they're like, I'm going to Pennsylvania. Or I'm going to a community who already has a site. And that just kills a lot of deals. And that's what I'm saying, when I said it at the beginning, it's like, it's gotta be somewhere in the middle, it's gotta be, that's not smart. That just doesn't make any sense. It puts, it puts you in that position. And the government's gotta be smarter than that.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I'll say too, because I, I'm happy to, just real quick, I wanted to say, talking about the tech, I didn't really put a bow on it at the end, but we're trying to recruit these businesses to come here. One of the things businesses want, especially young companies, young tech workers, they want quality of life. And so what you're trying to do downtown is really, really important. It's as essential as the broadband. Because no one's gonna wanna move to Newton Falls if they don't have the quality of life that they want. And there are a lot of people that live out in California, like, oh my God, I, I would take half the money I'm making out here to go live in Ohio somewhere. And we've got a lot of people who have left here in the last 30 years, that are in all kinds of really cool spots that, you know, would, would maybe wanna come back, but you gotta give them that quality of life. And so as you're looking to do the downtown development, there's build grants, which we've been able to get a few for the, for the community that are, that are transforming. We don't have earmarks anymore, but we did some of this in Warren, and I would be happy to sit down and, you know, again, put a little plan together, that, you know, you gotta plan, because you gotta have a plan, because, and I'll bring you to DC, I'll sit down with you and the Secretary of Transportation, I've done this for other communities, and they'll grow ya. You definitely won't get it the first time you try, and then you go back and you work on your application, and then you go back again, and you try again, and you may or may not get it the second time, and it's, you know, it's like going to the, being a sports team, you go to the playoffs, you lose the first game, next year you go to playoffs, you win two games, next one you go to the playoffs, you hopefully get into the Super Bowl or whatever. That's, it just takes some time. So I'm happy to totally engage on that, I think that would be important for, for Newton Falls, because this is such a great little downtown area that you have in the falls, obviously.
Well, with council's assistance, we have done our comprehensive plan, our economic development plan, and our five-year plan to help us, you know, into some of the other parts of this that we're doing. So we've run all this through council now, it's all been approved, we have all this in place. We're working on a marketing plan right now to market some of the Route 5 area, which will be, you know, rolling out here in a while, as soon as we can get it finished up. But we're doing those steps that we need to do in the economic development corridor to get these things done. So we're, we're putting our, our ducks in a row, so that we have everything where we're supposed to be, so.
Great.
Anybody from the audience that wishes to ask, would you step to the podium and just give us your name and, and ask the questions?
Hi. Congressman Ryan, my name's Julie Smiles. I hear a lot of talk about trying to bring in industry to this area, and we have a lot of blue collar workers, both skilled, unskilled, and highly skilled. But I'm kind of a geek, so I've been watching how tech is growing. And it seems like within the next decade, a lot of those jobs are gonna be gone through automation. And it doesn't seem like we have anything in place to take those workers and bring them up to a skill level where they can still earn that good wage that they had before. And, and if we do, then a lot of them are placed under that burden of student loans and everything else like that, so they're really not going forward, and they're not maintaining what they have now. And, like I said, this is gonna happen over years, but it seems like we're gonna be coming to a junction pretty quickly, and if we don't have something in place now to train up those workers, actually while they're working these jobs...
Yeah.
And not put them back in debt, so that they can segue into the future job.
Yeah. That's, you're, you just brought up the $8 million question on, on how to, how to fix it. And I, I think, I know that the way forward is to grow the industries and invest in the industries that are really growing. I think that's, that's the only way you can do it, to where you create, you create the kind of jobs. I have a bill that we just presented again, we did, last year we did, doing again this year, for older workers who may lose their job, they can get wage insurance, so if they go from a job making 30 bucks an hour to 15, there's a wage insurance there, so the fall isn't as deep, I call it the GI, or Workers' Bill of Rights, or GI Bill for Workers, and gets them retrained. I mean, this is, that we have got to retrain, there's just, that, that's the future. And kinda what I said at the beginning, those, those technologies, you can think about driverless cars, you can think about electric cars. Well, if, if we get in a position where there's gonna be 30 million of them, and we dominate that market, and we own, you know, 30 or 40% of the electric vehicle market, the spinoff of that is you need to do electric charge stations, which I just saw a study that said globally, for just, because you, you know, if you move from gas to electric, it's like $30 trillion. Isn't that what Dick said? It's like 30 trillion. It was like $30 trillion to go from gas to electric charge stations globally. That's a lot of work. That's a lot of, that's a lot of jobs, because the, the economy's shifting, and that is gonna be a lot of private investment, too. And, and, and so, let's go. Let's, like, don't, we can't be afraid. Like, fear is the enemy right now, because China's going, and they're not afraid of anything. And we're going, oh my God, we're, you know, there's gonna be driverless trucks, and there's gonna be the... That's gonna happen anyway. Like, let's dominate the industry and then see where it goes. But I, my guess would be, you look at wind and solar, wind energy growing at 25 to 30% a year, solar's growing at 25, 30% a year, the 3D printing additive manufacturing, where you print parts, and that's grown at 25% a year, too. And the military's getting into additive manufacturing, because you don't have to buy 8 million parts, you can print one or two or five parts, and the part has more integrity, lasts longer, and gets to the plane, ship, tank, whatever, in a third less time, because it doesn't have to go through all the nonsense, it just gets printed up. And so that's the future. And, and what I want for us and for our kids is that we need 5G. You know, China's looping us in 5G, which is the super-high speed, and that has military implications, too, but it has economic implications, because these companies who have 5G are gonna grow a heck of a lot quicker than people waiting around. It's, it's the equivalent of having to wait to get an end user. It's like, just gums everything up. And so I, I think if we, if we get the economy invested in these things, we incentivize private sector to invest in these things, we convince every kid that they don't have to go to college, like, that was the biggest American scam ever. Like, we have plenty of work, we've gotta get kids skilled up, K through 13, K through 14, I think is probably where we should be. Get into our schools, I'll just say, you know, quickly, too, what Germany does, which I think is a pretty decent model, they get a kid that's like ninth grade, 10th grade, and they get the kid on a track. They don't just say, oh, you're gonna go do this and you're gonna go do that, they sit down with the kid, they find out what his, or her skill set is, they sit down with the teacher, they sit down with the parents, they sit down with the priest, I mean, whoever we wanna talk to to figure out, like, okay, what's this kid, what's this kid good at? Does he wanna be a plumber? Does he wanna be an electrician? Does he wanna be a professor, a doctor, a lawyer, a teacher? And then start getting them on that road down, so that when they graduate, and I'm, I'm a little biased here, because I have a 16-year-old, when they graduate from high school, they're not living in your basement. You know? We want them out in the workforce. And you look at all these jobs that go unfilled, welders, plumbers, and you look at the age of the building and construction trade, look at the age of community... of the building and construction trade, look at the age of communication workers, look at the age of utility workers, in the next five to 10 years, they're all gonna be in retirement. And what are we doing to get those jobs filled, too? And if you're working with these technologies with the schools, and it's gonna take some investment in the schools, too. It's not gonna be, you know, if you wanna get 3D printers in every school, if you wanna get technology in every school, if you wanna get teachers trained in these schools, if you wanna feed the kids decently, that, that doesn't cost really a whole lot. But it's gonna take some investment. But if we don't do it, it's gonna cost a lot more.
Does that include livable wage for the Workers' GI Bill?
That's not in it. Those are, they're separate, you know, separate bills for that. I get a little frustrated, I mean, I think the raising of the minimum wage is an essential component to getting people out of poverty, which is really key. We gotta start thinking bigger than that, though. Like, we gotta get back to 30 bucks an hour, 40 bucks an hour, where people can live their dream, you know? And their dream may be a little cottage at Lake Erie, or it may be just a fishing boat. But my goodness, like, you know, you look at the statistics now, and the people we talked to, going into retirement with no savings, you know, can't withstand the $400, $500 emergency, you blow a couple tires out, and you're screwed, you know? Like, that's, that to me is just unacceptable.
Mr. Ryan, my name's Richard Zemeznik. I live in Newton Falls here. I just recently did a stint on council here for eight years, two terms, was successful in bringing one business here, one health trial.
You look pretty good for a two-term councilman.
I worked hard at it.
Yeah.
They had six offices, and it is doing wonders here for healthcare. But I think the main thing for everything stems with money. I see all the money going out of the country, and I'd love to see us take care of us first. I belong to the Eagles organization, the Toronto Eagles. Their motto is people, helping people through, helping humanity. Let's take care of us first. Bring us the jobs. If we get jobs here, I think some of it'll trickle down, and we need help with schools. Stop my neighbor from, from getting on the computer and having China send over carfentol and fentanyl and, and selling it on the streets, tightened up the borders. Thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate it. Yeah, I mean, it's, this is about, whatever we do, technology, the worker gotta get cut in on the deal. And there's gotta be incentives. Right now, the tax code incentivizes corporations, they get a better tax rate if they move overseas, or they move to Mexico. And it doesn't make any sense. Germany and some of these European, they have a national industrial policy. Like, how do we grow businesses in this country and then keep them here? And that's, we, I got a bill that creates a chief manufacturing officer, cabinet-level position, that's in charge of figuring out how we make stuff in the United, how do we innovate, make it, and grow it right here in the United States? And then, and then do these kind of creative ways of financing to grow, how do you tie it to the workforce? And have the business and the local community college working together, so as that business grows, the feedstock, the worker is, is working and producing at a level. And then the worker is seen as a real asset for the community, or for the company, not as some side deal, some variable, some externality. It's like, you know, give them information, help them understand what, how the company's working, give them productivity bonuses, that, that is the way to do it. And on the border stuff, you know, I've voted on more than one occasion to put a wall up in certain areas of the country. The problem we have now is that there are areas that, that can't have a wall, because Mexico doesn't want it on their side, the Rio Grande River is there, and they're gonna put it in the middle of the Rio Grande River, and the ranchers and the farmers on the southern part of the southern states do not, and I've met some of these guys in, you know, southern part of the country, they really don't want the federal government coming down and eminent domaining their property to put up a big wall. That's not what they want. And so you brought up the point of this coming in through the mail, which is exactly the point. 90% of the drugs that come into the country come in through, like, El Paso, where it's a legal port of entry. He's got El Chapo's digging holes under the wall, and they build these, like, underneath the truck, they'll build like a secret bed underneath the truck or the car, and that's where they store the drugs. And, you know, we don't obviously have enough people to, like, see everything coming in. I think that's where we need to spend a lot of that money. And then with the postal service, it's incredible the amount of fentanyl coming in through the postal service. And you go in there and you look at the, how many envelopes and all this stuff is coming in through, it's, it's a needle in a haystack, which, which means you need technology and data analytics to figure out where this stuff is coming from, and it needs to be a global, international approach to figuring it out, so you're more targeted, like we do with terrorists, basically. You find out how to target where the drugs are coming from. So.
I had, I had one more question, Congressman. You, you mentioned the Cracker Plant, the Shaw Cracker Plant in Pittsburgh. And we do, in my personal company, we do have a lot of plastics customers. I don't know if the, the audience put two and two together. What the Cracker Plant creates is resin for the plastics industry. Is there any plans in northeastern Ohio to market us as far as becoming the plastics capital in the world like it used to be? Remember back in the day, Akron, and, you know, that we were always, you know, noted to be like the plastics, you know, capital of the world? Is there any plans like that? Do you guys ever talk about things like that?
I know we've had conversations, at Jobs Ohio.
Yeah, I had conversations about that today with one of the, I don't know if I should say the company, but it's a, it's a major oil and gas company, they're talking about developing the supply chain and, and the entire ecosystem. I mean, we all know what's rumored to go down in Columbia, I think it's Columbia or Carroll County with PTT. That's a $10 billion facility, not 4 billion. So you take those two facilities, now you gotta get together with your universities, you know, discuss the whole polymer chain and everything. So, yeah, it's ironic you asked that question, because I had that conversation about three hours ago, so.
Every squirrel finds a nut once in a while.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're definitely on that.
Any other questions?
And there, again, on the hydraulic fracturing, right, on fracking. In 1977, Jimmy Carter, through the Department of Energy, started doing research with the oil and gas industry. So you got a Democrat Republican with the primarily conservative industry coming together to research how to unleash all of this natural gas because of the energy crisis. That's the example. Little bit of this and a little bit of that, and if you work together, like you're on a team, you get stuff done. Now, here we are, how many years later, benefiting from this, because we had a big, long-term vision, you know? I mean, I think of Kennedy's speech going to the moon, imagine that today, you say, well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna go to the moon, people be like, can you imagine Twitter and the internet, and they're like, oh my, this guy over here, he wants to go to the moon. Has he lost his mind? How much is that gonna cost? How much is it gonna cost? You know, Russia's Sputnik, like, they're circling us, go! And we went, and it took nine years, and we got there. Because we had leadership, and the country was like, yes, we need to do this. And we made the arguments, and all of the technologies that spun out of those investments, all of the semiconductor companies that benefited from it, fuel cells, all of these things that have come out of that, we just, we are so short-sighted now. You know, we can't see beyond tomorrow. And, you know, what's it cost not to do some of this stuff? I mean, that's, at the end of the day, we've gotta really think about. Now, we can't waste money. I mean, we gotta be smart, government's gotta be smart, but we gotta do this stuff.
Mr. Zemeckis?
I just had one more question. Regarding President Trump, he had mentioned creating a Space Force underneath the Air Force. Can you give us some comments and what your thoughts are on, on that particular, and is that gonna help with the missile base at all, or is that, is that kinda separate, or?
Yeah. That didn't really go anywhere. I think he heard about it and thought it was cool, and said, let's do it. And it was, and like, the military guys were like, we, we don't have any, we can't do that right now. Like, it just was kinda, he just said, he noticed it kinda died down. We've got, and people complain about the defense budget, and that would be in, like, in the defense budget area. It's gotten so complicated, complex. I mean, we, you know, it started out, we had to buy guns and bullets and trucks and tanks, right? And then, and that evolved, and we had to do, and we got an Air Force, and then we got a Navy, and so now you got guns, but you still gotta buy guns and bullets and tanks and trucks, but now you got a Navy, and now you got an Air Force, and that kept going. And then we had air superiority, and so we had to keep doing that. And then we, satellites in the space, start helping communication, that's expensive. Then the technology that goes into all of these, super expensive. Then intercontinental ballistic missiles, short, mid, and intercontinental ballistic missiles, those are expensive. But you can't, you still gotta buy bullets and guns and have people in the Army and Navy and all that. Then, now it's, we're gonna shoot their missiles down, you know, like we did in the first Gulf War, those Patriot missiles. So now we got those, but you gotta keep everything else. Then you, then you had, then you got nuclear weapons through the Cold War. I mean, we have way too many, we have way too many of those, but you still need them, and they gotta be capable. Now we're into cyber, like where Iran, China, Russia, they're trying to infiltrate our banks, our, our Pentagon, our power electricity grids, power companies, every single day, millions and millions and millions of attempts to try to sneak in through cyber. So you gotta have a very robust cyber program. Now you got artificial intelligence, so you gotta invest in that, but you're still buying guns and bullets and tanks and trucks, and uniforms, and retirement benefits, and, you know? So this has turned into a very expensive enterprise for us. And so I think when the Space Force thing came up, I think the Air Force was like, General Mattis was like, yeah, that sounds really, really cool, no shot.
We have about 10 more minutes, so, Mr. Ryan, if you want.
Congressman Ryan, I, I think we're in a little bit more, I agree with you 110% about the electric car. I think it was on 60 Minutes the other night, that the Chinese, by 2023 or '25, if we don't catch up right now, we're, they're gonna own the whole market.
Yeah.
And I think the Volt, from what I understand, GM is gonna quit making the Volt. If I caught that, it's just not, so they're, if they own the market, that's scary.
Yeah.
So I don't know what you can do down, and the government can do, they're gonna have to take the lead, aren't they? With subsidies, or, or how, you, you said it right, the Chinese subsidize it, they give them breaks, they help with everything, from what I understand, and we're gonna have to catch on ourselves.
Yeah.
That's the future. Thank you. And I want to apologize for not, thank, thank you for coming, sir.
You got it. Thanks for having me.
Anybody else? Mr. Monteville?
I kinda like being up here like this, I feel really important.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Richard Monteville, Newton Falls.
Hi, Richard.
I think the thing that worries me, looking over the entire economy, not just the Newton Falls, I'm looking, trying to look on a broader scale, and you mentioned several parts of this, but I was hoping to see if there's gonna be any type of, kinda like what you mentioned, when Kennedy mentioned going to the moon and everything, we put all this energy behind it.
Yeah.
The thing that scares me is how far we're falling behind in AI.
Yeah.
And I think that, you know, you mentioned the 5G part of it, the broadband part of it, the education part of it.
Yep.
And we have some great things here in this area, when you look at Youngstown State, Kent State, Akron, Cleveland State, Baldwin Wallace, John Carroll, my, where I went, Hiram. We have a lot of great educational institutions that, you know, if they could be given the proper resources to head out and try to get ahead of this AI problem, so that we're not so far behind that we become a second-rate nation.
Yeah.
Let alone a second-rate area, country, a state. So is there any, can you see the government getting behind a real push and a concern that we will head out that way and, and try to at least catch up and not get ahead of them?
I, I don't see any coordinated effort. I mean, I'm, I'm trying, you know, with the chief manufacturing officer, with some research stuff, and what, what I'm trying to do is create examples around here of how to do it. And we, we've done it in Warren, we have an energy incubator, which we gotta get you guys plugged into, because there's about, I think, 15 companies in there now. And like I said, you get your downtown going, and just, because when you have these incubators, they're public-private partnerships. That one's around energy, Tech Belt Energy Innovation Center. And this, all the studies show that a company that comes out of an incubator locates within five miles of where the incubator is. So to have it here in Trumbull County puts Trumbull County in play. And they have partnerships with Eastern Gateway, Youngstown State, Kent, First Energy, public-private institutions, like, all coming together. Same thing with the additive thing in Youngstown, America Makes, all kinds of industry, and that's another industry that's growing, 25% a year. So they're gonna, you know, we wanna start locating a supply chain for additive manufacturing, too. Who's gonna make these big industrial machines? We wanna, we wanna make them, and then we wanna become a hub for using the printing. I don't see anything around AI right now.
Really? Okay. Hopefully, hopefully soon, real soon.
Well, we gotta incentivize these companies to take it and run with it, too, the small, you know, the smaller companies, there's, there's an opportunity for manufacturing to resuscitate itself because of AI. But we've gotta help those small businesses who can't afford it. If you wanna give a $2 trillion tax cut, give it to them.
Yes.
You know?
Good point.
Give it to them. Let them be able to deduct all of that, or give them grants, I mean, that's how you start plugging in communities that have been left behind, then they could start leading the charge.
Those that are willing to provide jobs, those that are willing to do research and development and try to move us forward.
Yeah, and when you're working with the, when you're working with the university, or you have programs like the Manufacturing Extension Program, bring technical expertise to these small businesses. They're not gonna know about AI, they may kinda hear about it, but if you're running a small shop in Niles, you don't know how to get AI in, and you probably don't know a whole lot about it. I think that's a good use of government money, to have that expertise going out to companies, like the Manufacturing Extension Program. We spent about $100 million on it a year, it's been dramatically cut, it's seen as government waste, and it, it provides basically consultants who have expertise in these fields to go to companies, and instead of $2,000 an hour, they charge a couple hundred, because they're public, it's a public thing. Those, that's, those are the kind of things that Germany does. And no one says, oh, it's the government spending money, these guys are spending all this money. Yeah, well, Germany maintains their industrial base. They have a pencil manufacturer in Germany. Now, how the hell does Germany have a pencil manufacturer? Because the industrial policy there has kept it there. And so what? Who cares if, well, it should be able to go wherever it wants. Yeah, it should, but I'm gonna make sure it stays here. I mean, you're not gonna get them all, but try, and have a policy that's incentivizing that stuff.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
One more?
Congressman, I, Dave.
Mr. Hanson, you have two minutes. And I got the gavel.
Where's the, get Phil's.
I got the gavel, buddy.
Get Phil's ham.
Thanks for coming, Dave.
You know, I just wanted to bring to light what you said about China, and we have to throw up a roadblock and slow these guys down. And the irony of negotiating with North Korea in Vietnam after all those guys were killed in North Korea and Vietnam. On your way out, Congressman, by the front door on the right-hand side, there's a dozen guys from town who were killed in Korea and Vietnam, most of them Air Force, Marines, and Army. And we're negotiating with the North Koreans in Vietnam. And these same VCRs and DVDs and things that we buy in China, it's built on the ashes of where they made Kalashnikovs and AK-47s and mines and things like that to kill our guys. And that trade has only been open 50 years. Nixon left the back door open, and they walked right in. And, and we bailed, we bailed General Motors out. And you look now, all these satellite companies that supply General Motors are And you look now, all these satellite companies that supply General Motors are coming right in and being bought up by the Chinese, and these guys are, they're, they're walking right in and they're, they're buying us out. And I don't know what you can do. It's, it's like a, it's like a kite string that's really wound up. It's going to take a lot of unwinding to get this straightened out. But somebody has to do something to slow the Chinese down. And it's, it's just not right. Like I said, on the way out, just stop and take a look at those guys on that brass plaque that got killed in Vietnam and, and North Korea. Thank you, Congressman. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yeah, appreciate that. Appreciate that. One last comment on China.
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes.
They have just put their president in for life because he's done such a good job. And there was an article last week about how the businesses in China now are not, the government's now consolidating power. It's like only a matter of time, like they were playing this whole free market thing. And they said, the beginning stages of the, the businesses in China are really getting upset with the government. And now this guy's in for life, and they're saying he's going to start consolidating power, which he kind of already has to get appointment for life. He's probably done a pretty good job of consolidating power already. Don't get any ideas, Mayor. But with, with, I sent the article to a friend of mine, who's actually from Akron, and he's in the CIA, and he said, this, this may be their downfall because they're going to get, they're going to get so insulated and they're not going to be able to move because they're not going to have kind of the freedom, like, our democracy's pretty messy, as you may have noticed. But it works because there's a lot of activity, a lot of movement, and they're, they're going to get hardened. And I think that, that could be, that could be to our advantage. I mean, we don't want them sinking because they'll sink the global economy with us, they'll take everybody with them. But if we get our act together and we remain dynamic and innovative and our government gets smart and we get business moving in the right direction, we can, we can catch back up. It's not too late, but they probably, I think they said that on the 60 Minutes thing. It's not too late, but if we go just a few more years, it's going to be really hard to catch up. Yeah. So, anyway, thanks for having me. I'm sorry I have to go. I would love to have the mayor take me out and buy me a Miller Lite here in town.
I was just going to ask if you want to go out and eat. I'll take you.
I can't. I have not seen my kids in a week, so. What's that? Yeah. Where'd the mayor go?
I'm going to thank the council for coming tonight, Mr. Lynch for putting this together, the audience, for all you guys to show up tonight, we appreciate that. Mr. Lynch, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
It's Rick's birthday.
Rick's birthday, yeah. Thank you again, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
[applause][1781.71]